The Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, July 7th at 7:03 PM. The first order of business is a public hearing, a continued public hearing for Stephen Flag, case number 2021-07, and then we had to also combine case 2021-08. The applicant or the representative present?
Mr. Chairman.
That's right, sir.
Okay. Actually, before you get too deep into it, I have to, my fellow board members don't know what I'm about to say, but there was a file that had been started in the town hall on this particular lot, I think maybe one, even the previous owner before Mr. Flag. So, we sent the file to town council, and town council called me at home at 10 minutes after 5:00 tonight and said that, in his legal opinion, that there's no grounds for a special permit here, can't be done. And he referred to, and I'll read it aloud if you'd like, he referred to Douglas zoning bylaw 3.4.7, reconstruction after catastrophic catastrophe or demolition. A non-conforming structure may be reconstructed after a catastrophic, after ca- after ca-
Catastrophe.
Yeah, catastrophe, or after demolition in accordance with the following provision: Reconstruction of said premises shall commence within three years after such catastrophe or demolition. So, in his legal opinion, he said there's nothing that you can do for this applicant.
But there has been no catastrophe.
Well, there was a fire on the property. There was a building on the property and it burnt down, according to the assessors' records.
I think what the application we're making, and I know you have town council's opinion, I don't know how you can contradict that, but it doesn't make sense because the application that we're applying for here has no bearing on the previous structure.
It does, because the previous structure had to be replaced within three years of being demolished, or fire, or whatever it may be, and it wasn't done within three years.
We're not, you're not taking advantage of any of the dimensional issues with that, though. We, our standing here-
It's a pre, it's a, it's a non-conforming lot, and it lost its-
Grandpa.
Grandfathering rights when it wasn't built on within three years after the fire.
Can I award my client?
Sure you can.
One minute.
And I, he called me at home at 10 after 5:00, I would've let people know before, but Ken had given me this folder, we sent it to town council, and it was about 10 days ago, and we just got a response tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, this is taking us totally by surprise.
Yep.
So, what I would ask is if we could ask the board to continue our hearing, my client has legal counsel who's been working on this.
Okay.
And we'll ask council to get, to look at this.
Okay.
I would hope that town council could give us something in writing so that their lawyer would be able to-
Well, actually, I discussed that with him, and he said that it was on the applicant's counsel to prove that it's buildable, not on him to prove it's not buildable.
Understood. I guess if the board can grant us continuance, we'll have my client's counsel look at this, and we'll have to get back.
We need to get something from them.
Well, actually, Mike, this is a, in a special permit, we have 90 days to make a decision after the close of a public hearing, but on a variance-
Anyway, we'll grant the extension.
Okay.
Yeah, I just make sure that we didn't-
I think we did extend it previously because of the-
So, and this, like I said, I found out at 10 after 5:00. So, could you email the office tomorrow with just granting us a, do you want to come back next month? Do you want a 30-day extension?
I think-
Continuance?
Yeah, why don't we ask for 30-day, yeah, I think, I think council can probably address that within 30 days.
Okay, all right. So, we have a motion to accept his request for continuance?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, second by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to grant a 30-day extension with the understanding that you will forward the office a 30-day extension on a decision for the variance.
Yep, we'll do it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
On the variance, or?
Yeah, on the variance, because that one has a 10 days from, I mean, sorry, 100 days from application.
Yeah.
All right, so we're doing one and two at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, I'll, we'll ask to continue both hearings, and if a, if a extension of both hearings is necessary, that's not a problem.
Okay.
A special permit doesn't need an extension, but variance does.
Okay. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry for the confusion, we just found out at the 11th hour, so.
We asked about 10 days ago, and got a response at 5:10 tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry to waste your time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next public hearing doesn't start till 7:30.
We want to look at some of these minutes, and-
Yep, absolutely, and I, I spent quite a bit of time reading them today.
Good.
They're lengthy.
Ooh.
Maybe it was a good picture, too.
Could be, yeah.
Honestly, I mean, to, to read all this every single month, I did, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's-
You know, the kid-
And nobody gave a damn.
Can't, yeah, can't beat the property.
Other than Mr. Fitzgerald.
Oh, yeah?
And, and they failed to name a-
Oh, no. Fucking idiot. What the hell am I worrying about?
Failed to name her counsel on the January-
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at, yep. Well, he, he's right here, Mr.-
Oh, I know, but she put question marks over here, I mean, see.
You're over there, me.
There were several times on the page two and three that had a question mark.
Pretty good shape.
Ever seen any of any of your owners?
Got a gas bill planned on it.
What do you think we did?
We may want to-
What do you think we did?
Have these fixed before we even-
We could change them, right?
Do you want to edit these whole things? You want, you want to go through and edit the whole thing now?
Well-
Because we have a gas bill, I just seen.
Yep, as, right. Yeah, so I think we could approve it with those changes, changes of your name and-
Well, okay.
It's just where the-
We can look it over and see if, see if it's accurate, I miss.
Yep.
Could I just ask a question?
Hey, Ken.
I'm going to be presenting next. I was assuming that everyone was just going to-
You really want us to believe in reading that?
I did not bring a big presentation. Board, does everyone have the package?
Oh, that's for, that's for re-roll.
For 17, yeah.
Yeah, 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 we have, we have-
Okay, all right, because I didn't want, you know, you to be like, having to look at my-
Okay.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
The only thing, there's a lot of Misters in here.
Right, and every one of them was back-
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Reading everything around it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, we gotta wait till 7:30, what do you think of that? Gotta wait till 7:30. What do you think?
Yeah, but this isn't the attorney. This isn't the attorney, these two. He hasn't been there before 2015. He's always been short. You've been asking it.
Yeah, if you want, we can rewrite it, it should be accurate, especially in something that's going to court.
I feel better going, just passing over it. Especially that particular one. We can look at the other ones, though, we got plenty of time.
Yep.
On the flag issued, did you guys push that out to August 7th meeting?
The first Wednesday in August.
The first, whatever that is, the first Wednesday, okay. Just wanted to-
Okay. So, if you want to look it over, I'll look it over in the January, and then we'll compare notes and then-
Yeah, yep.
That was the only one I had a question for.
What's that, January?
That was a lengthy meeting.
Sure was.
But that one's important to be-
At the time, I think, while we were zooming, probably what she couldn't understand.
Yeah, could be, but if we're going to approve it, though, it's going to be right, especially where it's gone legal.
Yep.
So, I think, well, maybe if we all re-roll one, we'll make notes.
Yeah.
And then, because I didn't know Mr. Fitzgerald was at the meeting.
Blame that guy.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
And then she referred to his attorney as Mr. Question Mark.
Right.
Her attorney, I should say.
Yeah. Forgot who that was.
I have, yeah, his name was actually at the beginning.
Oh, that's right, too.
P A C.
Yeah.
The next, the March minutes, there was no meeting in February, but we can jump to the March minutes.
Yep.
And we'll go back to the January.
Yeah, March, I don't have a problem with, that's the one that I did with the dolphins and that little deck extension.
Right, yeah.
That was pretty simple.
And then the dolphins is pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, yeah.
They were much shorter.
That was only a 20-minute meeting from beginning to end, and look at all the words I got.
It was all 20 minutes of talk. Yep.
Is that on your list?
Wouldn't, which? May?
On your attending chief?
Oh, yeah.
Your attending chief?
Oh, the other one right here.
What month was that, May?
Yeah, May, yeah, May fifth.
Absolutely. Yep.
Oh, I remember this one.
That goes with this.
That's the last thing on the list, though.
You don't have to send minute, you can just send this.
Right. Just make a copy of the video. We good with May and March? Are we good with May and March?
Yes, I am. I asked if you wanted to. Yeah, I'm good with all of them.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve March 3rd on the minutes, and May 5th of 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to approve the minutes of May, March 3rd and May 5th as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, okay.
We're going to hold January 6th until we-
And yes, January 6th had some typos, we're going to hold that one until next, next month. Had several typos, so.
Yeah. Yes.
There's the one you asked me.
Right.
So, that's the nature of it.
Mm-hmm. That's which way here.
Oh, okay.
I don't think Maria's here, anyway.
Nope.
Yeah, I don't think she's here, but is she here anymore? What do you think, Ken? Do you think she's here?
I don't know.
Is Maria? No, I suppose. Is Maria? I have no idea. Last week, so what do we do? Well, she was in the hospital, she's okay? Well, I didn't know what she went in. That's just someone told me, I don't know. Check, you don't know?
Figured that one. I just tabled it right here.
What did it say? What did it approve? What's approved? I don't know if that's a good thing or not, I reckon.
I would talk to town council, so it's just showing, I didn't see showing, maybe. Hey, Adju, wonderful mind, Bob.
He was, he was at the first one, not at the second, Louis was at the second one, not at the first one.
I know why they do that, they get me out of here.
He wasn't, but he never did.
Eating all ice cream he tastes.
Huh?
Soft serve.
Well, I got an email from him, too, yesterday. I'll forward the email, then we can figure out what to do, unfortunately.
Yeah, so you got to find out if you want to-
But he wasn't, because town council-
Chalk is here.
There were no minutes, the town council watched the whole meeting.
What, you like chalk instead of now?
No, exactly.
I didn't see it, no, not one of the meetings.
Sean was not the second one, Louis wasn't at the first one in that case.
Yeah, Louis here on May.
I'll, I'll forward you the email.
Yep.
Please, Mike, the mouse.
I'm getting there. Someone goes here, there's a, you know, it's in your, in the, in the copy. You can write the dates again.
I'm telling you. Oh, she was over, she's got that paper. With the candy in my clothes. Oh, my house on Kitty. Kitty likes me. Get down about 3:00 each day. I don't know. You know where May 5th, we just, May 5th, the water only gets, nice, the kitchen goes up a water mile. My house is right there. Nice. I sent anything? I'm always trying to buy my jam at the supermarket. Time is a runner.
Time is a-
It was advertised for 7:30, we can't start before the- What predicates that law? It would be up here, someone would want to come and speak a lot, where are we talking about here?
Because of the scheduled time.
Scheduled time. So, if we started early, someone could, came in at 7:30, that'd be issue. You could do that. Council, council, if you got something going, maybe six or seven hours. They might be up before you, you got to see, but I believe, I believe, I believe. I believe, I believe. Yeah, you got that, that's going on. My soul, you know, they got that thing going on. Amazon. Yeah, you're going to build a bridge, you got to do that. I don't really care, I don't know.
Me, so we got to figure out.
Yep, well. Yeah, no, this is just starting tonight, I'm going to keep it with all of my stuff. Thank you. Any more clips in that room?
Yeah.
I'm just going to keep this together.
Did they buy the one? Yes, I know that.
Yeah, I know it, huh?
10 cents.
I know it, huh? No, I got it out in the mailroom, I stopped it. I don't have, I don't have keys to the castle yet. Huh? Probably never will, yeah, that's all right. Can't get accused if you don't have it.
That's right.
It's not a bad thing.
No, I know.
I think you only get a fob to the front door anyways, I don't know if you get anything for this room, I have no idea.
I remember coming up here, opening the door, going in.
Oh, you could go in that room?
Yeah, just a slightly obvious, huh? Read the minutes, we're coming up on the next meeting.
Okay. Well, I got three minutes, I might take a leak.
Yep. Saw a lot of paperwork this month.
Yeah, it's 11:00, 12:00. Five a.m., all, like I said.
I had so much full time, it's a replacement. Where are you? They're going to let her stay around a little, a while, I guess, to teach her what she knew. That'll take about two seconds. I, I heard rumors that they already hired a replacement, but I don't know who it is. Remember the lady we had before, right? Not them, it was good. Had everything you needed, but it wasn't over the top.
Mary, I was talking to a truck. Sound like the sound of the dog.
All right, so just about ready. One more minute.
July the 7th, 12. That's usually wrong, I think.
Oh, yeah, that's where I'm going with this.
Do we need to speak into a microphone?
That would be good, because the minute taker would, yeah, make their life, just need to identify yourself before you speak, and then-
Say "change"?
Yep.
All right, I think it's 7:30, according to my phone. You hear that, Mike?
Yeah, he's going to fix it. So, once you come up.
What are you guys doing now? I can do it, we can do it. Why don't you do this?
Good to go, bud.
All right, everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay, the next agenda item is a public hearing for Jim Tavarez, case number 2021-10, 17 Reed Road, the date of the application was June 16th, 2021. The following was posted in the town hall and also advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and it read as follows: "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:30 on Wednesday, July 7th, 2020, in the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application: Jim Tavarez is requesting a special permit in a rural agricultural IRA zone district pursuant to the MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3 and Section 3.4.5, non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures, to construct a new home on property located at 17 Reed Road, Assessors Map 284, Parcels 201 and 202. A copy of this application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated." This hearing, all members- This hearing, all members present will be hearing the case and voting on it. So that's Mr. Bombara, Mr. Forget, Mr. Tosino, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and myself. To the best of my knowledge, certified mail was returned to the Community Development Office, and if the applicant or their representative is here, please, please join us.
Thank you very much.
I did have, I'm sorry, I did have one other thing. There was a correspondence from the planning board, which said they had no objection to the attached request for a special permit.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
Great. My name is Erin Riley, and I am a licensed architect in Massachusetts, and the Tavarezes have hired me to help them with the, with the new house. Just one little thing, I don't know if you just misread it, but you said 2020? So just wanted to make sure. Okay, that I didn't want, like, everything to be invalidated because of that or something. So, okay.
Good catch.
All right, so I'm gonna bring your attention to page two of the zoning special permit application form, and then also further in the packet, there are the drawings that were attached, and there's a sketch showing the outside of the house, and then the elevations, exterior elevations, and then the next sheet after that is a comparison of the existing and proposed setbacks. So if you could look at those two things at the same time, I think that would be the most helpful. So I'm just gonna read the narrative. You guys might have read it already, but for the benefit of others. Jim Tavarez, the owner, who is here, grew up going to Wollam Lake in the summers, and he has long dreamed of providing the same experience for his family. When the house at 17 Reed Road came up for sale, he saw it as an opportunity to become part of the community again, as well as to help improve the neighborhood by replacing the existing poorly maintained house with a new house, more in keeping with its abutters. In addition, the proposed location of the new house gives relief, because the new house will be placed within the current required setbacks. The only non-conforming thing about the proposed project is the lot itself. So the special permit requirement that the proposed project shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity is clearly met here. We propose a new house that will be a better neighbor to its abutters, both in quality and location. So the setback comparison that you see, the hatched dotted rectangle shows the existing house location, and then it's clearly marked the proposed house location, and then at the bottom of that drawing, does everyone on that page?
Yeah.
Okay. So it shows the comparison between the different setbacks, and there's improvement on, great improvement on the south side, improvement on the Reed Road facing side, and then the remaining rear and north side will be within the existing setbacks with a six-inch buffer all the way around. So we're hoping that, because, like I said, the only thing that's nonconforming is the lot itself, that will be granted the, the relief and the special permit. So if you have any questions or comments?
Okay, are there any board members have questions on this application?
Uh, just for clarity, the, the only encroachment that you rarely see is that rear deck.
Yeah.
You have staircases.
The rea, oh, sorry, those, the rear, it's not a deck. It's stairs going to grade. Yeah, it looks like a deck.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got down arrows on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Stairs going to grade from?
Uh, from a sliding door and from the porch.
I guess that would be a decision of the building inspector. I think you're supposed to have a platform outside the door. I don't think you can just walk out the door. The stairs, I think you need a platform. And I'm only bringing that up because that's gonna affect your setback.
Okay.
That would be an opinion of the building commissioner.
Okay.
As to whether or not you would need a platform outside the door.
So would the platform at the front door be an issue with the setback?
I believe, I believe you need one at every means of vigorous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every means of vigorous needs a minimum of three-foot landing at the top.
So would that change your dimension?
Uh, no, because it would, it would still just be a, a landing, not a, not a.
Would it be closer, would it be closer than it's shown if you add a landing to this?
No, because, well, I, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but the, the sopography map that we were given from the surveyor, it turns out that in the, that corner of the lot, there is a higher grade in one section of it. So we probably won't even have to go that far down to get to the grade anyway.
Okay.
So it shouldn't be an issue.
In every decision, we, we refer to the plot plan that was submitted, so.
We can't go outside of that.
Right. Just as long as.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but if we refer to this one, and you change it, you're not accurate with the decision.
Right. But if we, if we added a landing, but still didn't go any further than this outline, it would be fine.
If you didn't go any further than 17.
Yeah.
I would want the opinion of the building official if it's part of the structure.
And in my opinion, what they could do is take that, instead of a staircase, go and make that into a deck. You come off where you got the eight feet, put a staircase there, because you're gonna be out there anyway. Follow me.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So, so you're comfortable with the 17 five?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Is there any other members that have?
No, I, this looks awesome. We're just, um, big improvement what's up there, and made all the setbacks. Not as much of a lot.
Okay, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this matter? You just need to identify yourself before you speak for the minute taker, and your floor is yours.
Okay, do I sit over there to speak here?
You can stand there if you want to.
Okay.
Yeah, to speak.
My name is Christopher Pereira. I'm in the bottom right next door on number 17. This is not a personal issue whatsoever, but I believe there's no question that it's gonna devalue my property, because they're already at a higher elevation, and for them to propose to even go higher is gonna encroach on me like unbelievable. I'm also concerned about some of the environmental impacts of the demolition, and we already have drainage issues, that type of things. And my quality of life, and they're saying that's gonna improve it, I'm not sure exactly what that means, because it's not, it's going to do the opposite for me. Once again, it's not a personal issue, but I am 100% against this, because there's no question it's gonna devalue, and if I have to go into litigation, I shall. And the architect over here, as you just stated, there were already some questions, and the plans that we have are gonna have to be changed, which you guys just spoke about. I'm not 100% convinced what they're proposing is what's gonna happen, and that's it. I'm sure some others have some things to say as well.
Could I just, are you the?
You know, you just need to.
Excuse me, ma'am.
You just need to answer his question to me, please.
Okay, I, I just had a question.
I'm on the south side. They're on the north side. And they, there is one lot in between my home and theirs. My home, sir, is only 760 square feet, which is very small. I bought the home knowing it is what it is, and I'm living with it. I'm a full-time resident. It's my understanding these people are from out of state, and, you know, for them to come in and have a second home, it's great that they, I don't know if maybe whom they purchased it from, maybe misrepresented and said, "You can rip this down and build whatever you want there." I'm not sure what happened there, but I can tell you, there's no question I'm opposed to this 100%. Nothing personal whatsoever.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, would you like?
Oh, so I was just wondering, are you the direct or the house, your one house?
I've already answered your question once, ma'am. I told you I'm on the south side, the north side. You, have you been to the property?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'm the one that has the septic system, and the property line is right here, right next to the home.
Okay.
So if you're standing in the front, it will be on the right-hand side.
Okay.
Can I speak?
Do you have anything else, sir, at this point?
Thank you. I believe I covered everything.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that'd like to speak on this? Ma'am?
My name is Cheryl Gay. I'm at 21 Reed Road, which is right next door. My concerns, number one, I'm basically the spokesperson for our street as well. Nobody's really in favor of a three-story house on our street. That property is a higher elevation than most of the other houses on the street, so to have a three-story house is gonna be, you know, like.
Out of place.
Humongous, out of place. Our other concern, my, our other concern is the water. We live on a terrace. Water comes down. I already have a flooded lot because of water coming down from Angel. By having a foundation put in without proper drainage, my lot's gonna flood even more, and Christopher's wife is gonna flood even more. It's happened.
Yes.
It's happened.
Her fetish, please.
It's happened on other streets. There's a house that was built on Roslyn. The houses below have had water issues. People don't understand. When you live on Wollam Lake Terrace, water comes down from Wollam Lake. We get flooded. Our roads right now are a mess.
Ridiculous.
The other, you know, the other thing is the culverts. The culverts have to be kept open. People come in, you know, people move in, do not understand water situations. When I first moved here, I did not understand water situations. We flood. Our roads are a mess. Reed Road right now is not passable. It's washed out again. And the town, you know, town comes up all the time. I feel mad. I go out and apologize every time. I'm sorry our road's such a mess, but, you know, people have bought the houses, blocked the culverts, and the water goes down the roads. And my other issue is, if the permit is approved, can we have provisions on it if they don't start before 7 o'clock in the morning? And can they be made to stay on the property and not block the road? We have one-lane road.
Yeah, any decisions we make have conditions.
Okay.
So we listen to the abutters and to the applicant and try to come up with fair conditions for everybody.
Because we have, you know, like I said, it's a one-lane road. People, you know, and people need to stay, like, anybody working on his house needs to be on his property, not parking in my yard or parking in anybody else's yard, which, you know, it happens.
Okay.
We all work together on that road. When something's going on, we let one another know, like, you know, we're having trees cut down, so we let our neighbors know. You know, we're having people come in instead, just so you know. And it's, Reed Road is a tight, tight community, and there's also older people there that, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning isn't early enough for that.
That's the law, anyway. It's the law, 7 o'clock.
Seven, okay.
And to address, there was a discussion about the height of the building, and actually, everybody in town is allowed to build up to 35 feet high without any, that's allowed by zoning. So anything less than that is permitted.
Can I say something?
Yes, please do.
I just wanna.
You just need to identify yourself, please.
Jim Tavarez.
Okay.
I'll speak to one point. Yeah, when I bought the house, in fact, the culvert was partially overgrown, and it's old, and we already talked to the builder. As part of the project, we were gonna fix all the culverts, so everything in front of our house will be exactly as it should be with the pipes and let the water flow through. People fill in their front yards, and then the water goes through the street, but that's part of what we're gonna fix when we do the house.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Yes, sir. I have a quick question. The existing home that's there now, how many bedrooms is that?
Is it one?
Two. And what is the proposal of the new home?
Two.
Two.
Two as well? Okay. One last final point, and once again, nothing personal, but I was told by the gentleman here that he was already, he had told me last year, the town had already approved him doing what he wanted to do, and he was going to begin demolishing this spring, which I thought was odd, because no one else had known about this yet. So once again, I'll reiterate, nothing personal, but I was already told something that wasn't true, so how can I go forward believing anything that's going to be said?
You, you wanna address?
Yeah, yeah. So we, we are certainly not trying to misrepresent anything. Mr. Frazier?
Yes, you may, ma'am, not to be a jerk, but I didn't.
You know what, sir, you need, okay? I'm running, I'm running the meeting, not you, okay? Ma'am, the floor is yours.
Yes. Mr. Frazier's predecessor worked with us on a previous plan for a house, and he determined, because he had the jurisdiction to do so, that that plan did not have to go through the zoning board of appeals. We, we weren't, you know, trying to do anything or pull a fast one. That's, that's the ruling he made, and, and so, you know, we were gonna proceed, but then because of COVID and everything, some, some change of financial situation, et cetera, tried, decided to regroup, and then Mr. Frazier is here, and he was saying that, no, the lot is nonconforming, so it doesn't matter what you're putting on it, you have to go through the zoning board of appeals, and so that's why we're here. It was not, not anything, you know, shady or anything like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, do you have something else?
I was just gonna back up Christopher. We were, actually, everybody on the street was told that Mr. Tavarez had bought the house and was gonna come in and tear it down. Everything's been approved, and it was like, okay, this is Douglas. This does not happen this way. And we were told that, you know, I mean, every, everybody on the street was told that everything's been approved. They can come in and do what they want, and it's.
Well, we were just told that we didn't have to go through the zoning. You would still have to get a building permit, obviously, yeah.
And that's what we knew.
Right.
And that's what, you know, I mean, the neighbors were coming to me, "How can they do this?" And it's like, they can't. It has to be a building permit, and it's gotta be posted.
Right.
They can't just build a house and tear it down.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Fortunately, it got delayed, because Mr. Frazier is correct, and the previous guy was incorrect.
Exactly.
You're here.
We're going through the proper procedure at this point, so we can't fix what was said yesterday.
But I just wanted to establish that we weren't misrepresenting.
Oh, yeah, no, it's all, it's all clear.
And I, I have emails and whatnot showing.
Yeah, okay. All right, anybody else that wants to speak on this issue, case? Okay.
Before we go either way, if there's a discrepancy on the plans, do we want that corrected?
Yeah.
I would rather have a corrected plan.
Yeah.
A corrected plan prior to making a decision.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't want to refer and get us the right one after we.
Okay.
So Ken has something.
Yep. Ken?
I would be so inclined with this plan to have, like Mr. Fitzpatrick was saying, have this corrected, showing the landings, that are the appropriate landings, and showing us what the setbacks would be, when those are all correct. I mean, I'm looking at it. I'm seeing the front porch, but if that's stairs on that front of the house, and you have to have a landing, it will change the elevation, it will change.
Well, I've already got a landing in the front.
Yeah, a certain half feet.
Yeah.
But you've got two side doors. You've shown, well, you're showing the landing on the small porch. Is the deck coming off with a set of stairs on the back deck? You're gonna see as well?
Yes, so this is a porch, and then those stairs will go up there.
Okay.
And so maybe we would just.
So it needs to show, depict exactly what's going on, and what the, what the setback would be.
And if, if, if we're comfortable saying that the setback would stay within what it is, do we need to wait for another whole meeting, or can I just correct it and keep the setbacks the same?
No, you would have to come to the next meeting.
Yep.
We, we can't have a, a meeting outside the meeting, and because the abutters have to be accorded the right to see what you're presenting.
So even if the setbacks are staying the same?
Uh, no, we're still talking about the deck and the landing.
Right.
We're, we're just correcting.
If you leave them the same, they're, that's, you know.
No, I meant, I meant, sorry, I meant the, the, the distance from the lot line, from the bottom of the stairs. If that stayed the same, would we have to come back?
I'm not, I'm not saying.
I, I.
Is what I would be looking for.
And that's what we're looking for, so why I even brought up the landing?
Yeah.
When you went to see.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
He would have rejected you because you didn't have the landing out front, so I didn't want to tell you, tell you his opinion. I was just trying to prevent you from that.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're gonna have, I would feel more, I personally would feel more comfortable having an actual plan that showed what you're gonna do, whether the, the stairs go to the, into the eight-foot direction, or go the other direction, wherever they're going. So we understand what you're doing. I, I would also, since the point was brought up by the abutters, show what the elevation is. I'd like to know what the overall height of the.
Oh, I, that's, that's indicated on the elevations.
Yep. No, I, yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. We do, any decision, we refer to the plot plan.
Yeah.
It must comply with what was submitted, so if, they may be minor changes, but they're, they're changes, so. Anybody else?
If you do, if you do adjust, adjust your plot plan, make sure there's a revision date because you refer to that as well.
Right, right.
Sometimes we don't get them on there. That's the only reason I bring it up.
Okay. So can I, if, if, if I just, can I show it to you?
Yes. Yes.
If I just made it like, that's the landing? And then that's the stairs and everything else stays the same?
No, just the stairs anywhere.
Well, what you need to do is put down what you're intending to do.
Right.
If you're asking him whether or not that's okay, he, he can't do that at this point.
No, 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 yeah.
I'm just making sure it's clear, that's all.
You go earlier, you can go this way. It's the, it's the, you've got a shower.
Okay. So, so there's no way that we can have it decided?
You're not going to have it decided tonight. You don't have a plan to go by.
We need a plan that we have to show.
You're not going to mark it up and give it to us. It's going to be part of the record when we're done.
This is not, you know, acceptable right now because of that one, the landings.
Okay.
Okay?
Ken, did you have something?
Yeah, I would say with this, if they're going to be showing the exact details of the property, maybe they can incorporate a gradation map with the property sitting on it so that everybody will see.
That's, that's in there already, yeah.
Yeah, but is it just on the lot? Are you showing the areas so that we can know where this potential, how much of a potential runoff there could be there?
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, stormwater management and whatever.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I designed the topo map so that the water goes out to the, the culvert. But we didn't, is there a topography map that has any detail to it of the entire area?
On the assessors map would show you something that's vague.
Probably go onto the town website, you can get that.
Because it, that just shows kind of this like sheet going across, you know, from the northeast to the southwest.
Right.
That's about it.
Yeah, no, all we're trying to do is address the concerns that.
Yeah, no, and.
Abutters brought up and to make sure that you answer these questions.
And we're definitely designing it so the water goes out to the culvert. And as he said, the culvert, you know, going to.
So maybe French drains put around that property?
Yep, yep.
And that will be stipulated?
Pardon me?
That will be stipulated?
Well, it'll be, it'll be in the contract for the house because, you know, we're going to build that then, yeah.
I've seen contracts broken and just like Yahoo. I like it stipulated.
Really, yeah.
It is in the building code.
He's the guy in charge right here when it comes to the building himself.
Yep.
So he'll be overseeing the whole project from start to finish. So we're sure, I'll show you that. He'll be on top of it.
Thank you. I appreciate, I greatly appreciate that.
He doesn't want to live on a crummy street either. So, I mean, the, the, the road itself, I don't mean a crummy street.
What he's building, I think he'd like to see the street improved, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I, and I have an agreement with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so.
Would you like to continue?
We can continue this meeting until our August meeting, which is, let's see, August 4th.
That's fine, we're still with, we're.
And it.
Oh, after the close of the public hearing, doesn't matter anyways.
Right. That'll be at 7:15.
Okay.
On August 4th.
You want to vote on that?
Yeah, we have a motion for somebody to.
Second. Oh, you're so moved. Second.
Okay.
John, you didn't do it.
A motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. McMorrow, to grant a continuance to our meeting on August 4th at 7:15. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just to get clarification and tell me if I should ask this some other time or place. But the 90 days, you know.
That's after the close of the public hearing. And we haven't closed it, it's still.
Oh, no, no, I understand that. But is it, is it really nothing is definite until those 90 days? Or?
No, 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 no.
That's just the outside timeline?
If we had decided that tonight, once the decision is, is typed out and we sign it and it gets registered with the clerk, then it's a 20-day appeal period after that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hour eight, 53. Yeah, you can do right next.
Yep.
What's that? That's what you have above ground.
Everybody, if you get a copy of this stuff.
No, I didn't know.
No, but.
All right. All right, the next, next hearing is a public hearing for Douglas Convenience Center Incorporated. And it is case number 2021-111. 74 Main Street, Douglas. The following notice was posted in the Town Hall as well as advertised in the, was the Telegram Gazette. And it read as follows. The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:45. Douglas Convenience Center Incorporated is requesting a variance in a commercially zoned district pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.2.2, seeking a variance to allow motor vehicle gasoline sales and above-ground liquid petroleum gasoline and diesel storage on site. The property is located at 74 Main Street, Map 188, Apostle 33. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. We have a correspondence from Douglas Water Department. Did you, did you get a copy of this?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right. So. The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Ray Whitehead. I own and operate Family Convenience Center at 63 Main Street, which consists of a gas station, convenience store, Dunkin' Donuts, ice cream shop, and liquor store. I purchased the business 20 years ago. 17 years ago, we renovated it. And I remember thinking, there's no way we'll ever outgrow this. And we have. We have a couple of issues, some of them significant, that face us. First and foremost would be public safety. Our Dunkin' Donuts drive-through queuing will hold nine cars. The 10th car has the potential to be in the street and sometimes is. I think 17 years ago, that was fine. It is not fine now. It's a potential hazard that I feel needs to be fixed. Some of our other hardships that we're facing on that site is the business has grown to the point where we don't have enough parking. We don't have enough onsite storage. We don't have enough cooler doors. We don't have enough nozzles. We used to sell 700,000 gallons of gas a year. This year, we expect to do 1.7 million out of two dispensers. Our volume in everything is up. Just last month, we ran out of gas five times. And twice, we had to get a load the next night. We typically get a load every other night. If our volume goes up anymore, 5% more, we will be getting a short load of gas every night. And nobody wants this, I don't think. We spent months looking at expanding to the west, tearing down a house. As many of you may or may not know, there's a stream in the back, Centerville Brook, that makes the property riverfront, having, abide by riverfront regulations. By the time we met all those regulations, it kind of rendered that expansion useless. We couldn't gain enough parking spaces. We could fix the Dunkin' queue, but we couldn't fix any of our other issues that we're facing at the store. So we've decided Plan B is the 5.3, 4, 5 acres at 74 Main Street, diagonally across the street, which I purchased a year ago. I purchased it to protect it from a competitor. I didn't want Cumberland Farms moving in or anyone else that could impact. I had no intentions of developing it. But just in the last year, since we bought a liquor store, our sales are up and has magnified our problems. The best thing we can come up with is start new over there and fix every issue that impacts the town. So I'm presenting what is our final concept plan. And what we're proposing is a store that's over three times the size of our current store, more than twice as many parking spaces, five dispensers instead of two, above-ground storage tanks. We're here because of a regulation, a Zone 2 watershed protection area that feeds the town wells. This area and including the store, according to the state website, you, state, you can have a gas station, but you cannot have underground storage tanks. We're grandfathered so we can continue to exist. The town bylaws restrict, they do not allow a gas station and do not allow underground or above-ground storage tanks. We're here asking you for a use variance to allow us to meet the state regulations and allow us to put in a gas station and above-ground petroleum storage tanks. We intend to do everything state-of-the-art with redundant systems for safety and security. And in return for allowing this, we will decommission our current site. Our current site has 35-year-old fiberglass-coated steel tanks that are in the ground 50 feet from the stream. We had an overfill on a delivery. It wasn't detected, it was underground. We're still cleaning that up. We won't have any of that over here with the new systems to be put in place. We feel the Dunkin' Donuts queue alone, this would be the drive-through window, that's car number six ordering, this is car number 20. So it's maybe 27, 28 cars to get to the street. I think the typical is 13 or 15. So this, this would be amazing. We'd never have a backup to the street. We'd have, any of you who know our site, the parking, the entrances are right by the dispensers. On a good day, it's chaotic. On a bad day, it's worse than that. This will fix all of that. And we just think that there's not a negative aspect to this, including and particularly the safety of the town's water source. We think taking those old tanks out, removing the remaining contaminated soil, decommissioning, removing the dispensers, the piping, the canopy, and putting everything here, the best I can possibly do significantly reduces the risk of contamination to the town water supply. We met with the Town Water Commission, explained what we intended to do. They agreed with us. They felt this is a safer alternative to the town water supply than the existing situation. So I ask for said variance.
Okay. Actually, Lou, I was just looking at the abutters. I was like, you're in a butter, I believe.
I am in a butter, yeah, I guess so, yeah.
And you want to recuse yourself for the record?
No. I'll have to vote, I'm not going to excuse myself.
All right. Anybody, anybody have any questions?
May I ask a question? May I ask a question?
To?
To.
The applicant?
Yes.
As a resident?
Yes.
Or as a board member?
Not as a board, as a resident, okay.
Sure.
All you're doing is taking what you got over here and putting it over there.
No, I'm making it a lot better.
No, 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 no.
But yes.
Right, right, right. But that's what you're doing.
Yes.
So there's no way that anything else can, you're making it better, you're making it more safer.
Yes.
And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's better for the community, as far as I see it.
I believe so.
Okay.
In every way, safety.
Yeah.
Ability to, to come in and out, the, the products we're going to offer, everything will be better.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to hear. That's why, you know, I, I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Jim? Yep, go ahead, John.
We have not gone through a technical review. What our plan was here is if we get the variance, then tomorrow, we hire a traffic engineer because I know one of the big issues is turning lanes and the entrances. And I'd rather get ahead of that before the technical review so we can go with something meaningful and knowledgeable. So I've, I've met with the fire chief just to get his feedback. I have not met with police or.
And the fire chief has said anything?
He, he had no issue. He thought this was, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want hearsay.
Yeah, well, right across three from two, so.
I mean, he, he thought it made sense to him that it would, it would be a safer in and out.
Okay.
Public safety would be better.
Anybody else? Ken?
Just curious on that, with the five islands or stations, is that going to be self-service or is that going to be still in attendance?
We have not decided what we're doing yet.
So what would the safety factors be built in for self-service? Being in the water district?
Same as now, an island with the retaining grates and a fire suppression system and cameras watching every dispenser and always having a second body in the building. So it's never left unattended. Just like every self-service gas system.
The D E P guidelines allow for that self-service in that water district?
I am unaware of anything regarding any requirements. My attorney, Tom Reedy, is here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, there's, there are no requirements. So two, it'll be fine. And so, and I think as far as safeguards go, not only do you have those positive, this is my engineers had that, positive limiting barriers, those little grooves that Ray had talked about. In additional, there will be a stormwater system that will probably have a oil-water separator. So it would get into those, you know, let's assume Catch Basin, into whether it's a storm scepter or other proprietary device that would separate out. So if there, there was a spill, that's how it would be collected for whatever got into the water supply.
Which is what we have now at our store, even though we're self-serving.
Okay, is anybody, anybody else that'd like to speak on this?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's definitely a better alternative, speaking for the above-ground tanks, it's definitely a better alternative than what he currently has. I would be in favor of the above-ground storage tanks.
And again, the, this meeting is, they're seeking a variance to allow the sale of gasoline and storage above ground.
Right.
A lot of those issues, we'll go through site plan review with the planning board.
Yeah, correct.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yep.
There's a lot of work to do. We're just asking you, you know.
I know, that's why I brought it, and I made the statement about the above. I want to stay focused on what we're dealing with. All the other stuff is going to happen in other boards.
I can't speak to intelligently about all the redundant safety features. We haven't designed the tank system. designed the tank system, but I know there's containment and alarms and physical shut-offs and everything to reduce. And then if there was a spill that even goes into a tank, I mean, it's far, far greater security than anything we have now.
That's going to fall under the fire department.
Yeah. I'd like to bring up one other thing. A few years I was before this board on a similar project. I was the guy screaming like a lunatic that the end of the world was coming if we approved this. Remember me?
How did you brought it up?
I'd rather address it than, you know, it's there. At the time, someone else was going to put in a store that competed with me. I was in survival mode. I went after one single issue, and that was the drive-through window was on the wrong side of the road. It should be on the morning drive side. That is, all I ever argued was the public safety of crossing opposing traffic coming in and crossing opposing traffic coming out. Ultimately, the planning board did issue them a permit. They were comfortable enough with whatever designs came up to give them that special permit. I will have to tell you that I don't feel differently. It is the wrong side of the road for a coffee drive-through. That is the one negative thing that I come up with with this plan. However, I do feel all the other positives far outweigh that. But I haven't changed my opinion on that one aspect. And I'd rather have a dialogue, if anybody cared to, about that one issue.
That would follow the site plan review with the planning board. So we're going to stay focused on the gasoline sales and the above-ground tanks.
Great. Thanks for bringing that up, though.
All right.
No, I appreciate you mentioning it. I'm the one that during your tech review, I asked you that question.
Oh, yeah.
And you responded and said, "This is awkward." And just pointing out that.
The irony doesn't escape.
It was an opportunity.
We did have a correspondence with the zoning board.
Planning board.
I'm sorry, with the planning board. Thank you. And they said they had no objection to the request for a variance.
For the tank.
For the storage.
For the tank.
Right.
You got excited. I didn't want to, we're only here for the tank, the above-ground tanks.
Above-ground tank and ability to sell gas.
Gas, yeah.
Well, two.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Is anybody else, anything they want to say?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Bembara.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Forget to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. The board like to make a decision tonight?
I'll, I'll say that I'd like to approve the Douglas Convenience Center, the application for a variance for gas and pumping on Main Street.
Case number 2021.
Yeah, I'm sorry. 2021-11.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Bembara to allow motor vehicle gasoline sales.
Yep.
And above-ground liquid petroleum gasoline and diesel storage on site.
Yes.
Okay. At the location of 74 Main Street. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Bembara, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to approve the variance request. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There'll be four votes, I'm sorry. Mr. Forget, Mr. Bembara, myself, and Fitzpatrick. As in a butter, Lou, you won't be able to vote.
Right. Can't vote.
So, okay. Your variance is granted. We will get it drafted as soon as possible and get it to you. And good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
It could take a little bit. We have staff issues, so we'll get it as quick as we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got plenty to work on.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See, Sam, that was easier than last time, huh?
Take over the place.
8:15 was good for Flying Goose.
Yeah.
It's an 8 o'clock hearing.
Hey, gentlemen.
Mind if I set up a couple easels over here?
No, go right ahead.
Sure. What have we said? No.
You brought all the tricks.
We tried. We usually do a part-time, we thought this was a little bit easier for everybody. Can I have multiple copies?
Then you're going to be behind a wall, I'll tell you.
It's all right. I'll...
Okay.
We've still got a chair over here, Floyd.
Yeah.
You can sit with us. You won't have to.
You can sit at the big table. You don't have to sit at the kid's table.
Can I present these to the board?
As soon as we open the public...
Yeah, we haven't opened the hearing yet.
I don't have the...
Do you want the legal thing?
Yeah.
Right here.
I do?
No, I got it.
Glad you got one. I didn't get one.
Got it.
Okay. The next agenda item is the public hearing for Flying Goose LLC, case number 2021-12, 286 Webster Street. Date of the application was June 16, 2021. The following notice was posted in the town hall and in, and published in the Worcester Telegram Gazette read as follows. "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals to hold a public hearing beginning at 8:00 PM, Flying Goose LLC is requesting a special permit in an industrial zone district pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws. Section 9.3 and Appendix A, Section C.1, retail establishment for sale of merchandise in an industrial zone district for a retail marijuana facility on property located at 286 Webster Street, assessors map 205 parcel 3. A copy of the application may be viewed at the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated." Okay, the public hearing is now open. The applicant or their representative here?
Several. So my name is Eric Zouman, Managing Principal of ZDS, Architect of Record, and I'll allow other design consultants to introduce themselves that probably will be testifying at this hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Dan DeCesaro. I'm a project manager with Joe Cassali Engineering and a registered professional civil engineer. Just to give you some history on this property, this property was sold to the applicant through an RFP process with the Board of Selectmen for development. The parcel subsequently received a community host agreement approval with the Board of Selectmen for the retail marijuana sales. So as far as where we are in the town, this is Route 16, Webster Street, and the western property line here is the separation between Webster and Douglas, the two towns. Initial, we had the property survey, we had wetlands assessed on the site. There's no wetlands on the portion of the site being developed. There are wetlands much further down towards the south end of the parcel. That won't be affected by our development. As far as our proposal, we're looking to construct one building consisting of some mixed uses, a 1600.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I introduce you?
Yeah.
Sir, can I present these? Would you like a hand?
Sure.
Give you this presentation?
Yes, please.
Oh, Mary. What's up?
Yeah, as you, you see in the packets that Eric has packed.
If you got three, I can pass them over.
Thank you. Our proposal consists of a 1600 square foot coffee shop and approximately 3,500 square foot pizza shop and approximately 2,800 square foot retail marijuana dispensary. The layout of the building has been designed such that it falls completely within the setbacks of the industrial zone. We've designed the site to include 60 total parking spaces, whereas for the combined uses, the site requires 42 parking spaces. We've also included 3 ADA spaces in accordance with federal requirements. To the rear of the building, we've designated a dedicated 12-foot wide loading zone to accommodate the three uses. And we have a drive-through on the eastern side of the building with queuing space for practically 10 cars. Should we ever get more than 10, that queuing can continue down this lane. And we could literally fill upwards of 24 cars or so before we spill into the right way. So there's plenty of real estate. Site signage, we do have a sign proposed in the front. The sign will be designed in accordance with the town's sign bylaws. And then as far as utilities go, we will require a well for the site, which is going to be located towards the south portion of the site. That design work is currently ongoing. We'll obviously need a septic system to service the site. And given the uses, it's going to be a relatively complex system consisting of several grease tanks, septic tanks, and a pretty large soil absorption system. As far as stormwater goes, the general topography of the site, everything is pitched towards this northwest corner of the site. We have very shallow ledge throughout the entire site. We did approximately 25 ledge probes and 10 test pits throughout the site to assess dents to ledge and dents to seasonal high groundwater table. So these appurtenances, the septic system, the stormwater management areas have been designed where we have maximum separation to ledge and maximum separation to the groundwater table. So we have a, generally stormwater for the site is going to run off to a sediment for bay. It'll be pretreated in there, discharged to a larger stormwater detention basin, which will hold back rates and volumes heading off the site. So we do have reductions in peak stormwater rates and total stormwater volumes for all storms for this site. As far as site lighting, we do have site lighting proposed, and I have included a photo measure plan in your packets. We have several lights designed through the site. They'll be using dark sky LED technology, so there's night, no light spillage over the property lines. We do have lights at the two entryways to the site as, during the pre-application process, that was an item of concern. So as far as where we are in the process, we attended two technical review committee meetings with the town, I believe in May and March of this year. We met with the fire marshal and discussed his concerns as far as circulation goes to the site. So we went through several iterations of redesign to make sure he has adequate turning radius in the back of this building for the town's fire apparatus. We requested that we provide a fire system for fire protection for the building, so we've incorporated that into the design. So moving forward, you know, we're here tonight as, you know, for the special permit for the retail use within the industrial zone. Subsequent to this, we do need to go to the planning board for a special permit for the drive-through use and for a site plan review. Hopefully, upon approval of those two items, we'll file septic permits and a well permit with the Board of Health here in Douglas, and hopefully go for a building permit after that. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Eric, and he'll go through some of the floor plans and rendering for a second.
Thank you. Again, Eric's one of Managing Principal of ZDS. We've heard a lot at the past two meetings we've had with the town, and we feel like we've tried our best to respond to those concerns. And Dan did a great job of pointing them out. It had a lot to do with traffic patterns, site lighting, access off that main road, and making sure that we have all the clearances around the structure to satisfy fire apparatus. I think what I could contribute or add to is just the design of the structure itself. And we went for this modern farmhouse, or modernized farmhouse motif, because it was part of the RFP process, and it was actually part of the imagery that we had presented the town originally. And so we wanted to make sure we stuck with that design direction. And so the, you know, post and beams structure, some vocabulary that I think we all can recognize, standing seam roof. I think the tenants, it's a total of 8,000 square feet of interior structure. The three tenants, they're all indicative. We don't have any leases signed yet for whether it be the coffee shop or the pizza location, but we are designing this to be an F and B, these second and third concepts to be light food and beverage. The overhang in the front is intentional to make sure we have some coverage for people entering and exiting the structure. And we're going to continue to develop the design in accordance with the feedback that we received from the town to date. And we're here to receive as much as we possibly can. So I don't, I don't think we can, we could continue talking about details of the architecture if you all would like, but I think Dan did a great job of pointing out the key concerns for the site. And I'll leave it at that for the floor.
Okay. Is there any other presenters?
Go ahead. Sorry. I'm Herman Peralta from Beta Group. I'm a traffic engineer. From what I understand, you've got the traffic reports. I mean, I can quickly go through the traffic report, or unless you just want to, you know...
Yeah. No, go ahead. Please do. Go ahead.
Again, my name is Herman Peralta from Beta Group. I'm a registered professional engineer with State of Rhode Island. So Beta was retained by the owner to assess the potential impacts of the proposed mixed-use development. In order for us to prepare our traffic study, you know, a few items was completed. Number one, we did an inventory of the physical roadway characteristics of Webster Street in the project area as it relates to safety and operations. We collected traffic data that includes automatic traffic record accounts in early June, but we also obtained mass DOT traffic data to just compare contrast between, you know, COVID, pre-COVID numbers. We also obtained crash data from mass DOT to see if there's any potential safety operations, I'm sorry, safety issues within the project area as it relates to frequency and severity of accidents. We then used IT chip generation manual and from independent study to try to come up with the estimated trips that will be generated by the proposed commercial development. We then evaluated the, you know, the two site driveways as it relates to safety and operations, and just made any recommendations for mitigation if necessary. Again, just to briefly, an overview of Webster Street. Webster Street is classified as a rural major collector roadway that belongs, that runs in an easterly, westerly direction. It's approximately 26 feet wide, 11-foot travel lane and 2-foot travel lanes in each direction. And it's posted at 40 miles per hour in the town of Webster, and then transitions to 45 miles per hour in the, in the town of Douglas. Relating to the safety of these two driveways, we specifically measured the stopping site distance for both driveways to be able to, you know, provide safe access. And both driveways does provide sufficient stopping site distance. In addition, as it relates to operations for the site driveway, based on the low hourly volume that serviced along Webster Street, both access drives will operate efficiently, especially for left-turning movements. Other than that, that's both access driveways were designed for safe and efficient operations.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any board members that have any questions with the applicant? I just had one question in, and it wasn't in this town, it was in a budding town, but they built a Dunkin' Donuts, and they said it couldn't be serviced by a well, because they serve too many people in the course of a day. So I'm, so they actually brought town water from Douglas up to the Dunkin' Donuts on Lackey Dam Road, because they originally proposed that with a well. But someone, the DEP, someone said it couldn't be done.
The well would have to be certified as a public water supply.
Okay.
Well, I mean, what I remember, having you said that the town went out there and delivered the water to us, of course, Oxford, was that water got contaminated from the gas station.
Yeah, this was before they, oh, was that what it was?
Yeah. It got contaminated by the gas station. It wasn't, you know, liquid going in there, but it was contaminated by the...
So when they built it, it was on a well?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I agree with, with him on that. It was serviced by a well.
Okay.
And there was contamination. They couldn't brew their coffee. So they ran water up from Douglas.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
That was a good point, John.
Sorry?
That was a good point.
But I believe the well would just have to be certified as a public water supply.
Okay.
Right.
It's just a little, it's tougher guidelines than a residential home.
Okay.
But again, that would be a Board of Health issue, that would...
Yeah, I agree. No, I just...
Exactly.
Anybody else?
No, I have nothing. I went through the whole book they got here and the maps they got here.
Okay.
Bob may have something. What's that?
Oh, Bob?
I just want to say on behalf of Economic Development, this project has been through two tech review meetings already, and most of the issues that we have brought up, they have incorporated already into their drawings, very cooperative.
Okay.
And I know when the RFP was, was made up for that particular land, when it went up for auction, it was specifically designated for this use. There must have been an oversight for it being zone industrial instead of commercial.
Yeah. Okay.
So I just wanted to add that to it. But nobody else has anything else? I didn't think closing the public hearing.
Is this the same piece of land that the town put out on bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the RFP process.
Yeah, you bid it out, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. That's what I thought, because it's just before the line, right?
Yeah.
Just before your line, because there's a, there's a...
There's a trail that goes in there. Cell tower.
Yeah, there's a cell tower. It's like...
On the other side of the cell tower.
It's your land, isn't it?
I own the rest of that, yeah, all the way down.
Yeah, it's a campground.
Yeah. I was just wondering. But this is the same land, right?
Correct.
Right.
So where is that, where is this exactly from? Where Louis is talking about where he cleared the...
Up on 16. You know where the big cell tower is on the Douglas-Webster line?
Yeah.
You go by...
You go by K and O, going up into Douglas. You go by his property, then there's that road to the tower, the flashing light, right after that.
On the right.
On the right-hand side.
That's industrial land.
Yes.
Correct. That's why we're here, because they need, they need a use variance and to put this retail use on industrial.
You guys got the photo like this.
Yeah.
It's inside here, Bob. And it shows you where everything is. And it's topographically mapped inside here also.
Yeah, it's right there, you can't miss it, it's right. I bid on that land.
Did you?
Yeah, I bid on it. I still don't know what happened to it, but I bid on it.
Sounds like you already owned some of it.
All right, is there anybody else that wants to speak?
I just got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
I just, why, and I don't, I'm not one way or the other right now, but why do we change a lot of our industrial land into commercial? I mean, is there, is there, we don't have any industrial land, right?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Gilboa Street.
Very little.
Gilboa and most of Davis is all...
Yeah, most of Davis.
Most of Davis is all industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just changed a lot on Gilboa Street, so...
We have been changing as the need arises.
Yep.
Commercial to industrial and industrial to commercial.
Yep.
We didn't touch this industrial because retail is allowed by special permit, and that's the reason they're here tonight, is to get a special permit. That's the easy way to do it. The complicated way, go before a town meeting to change that entire zone to commercial, but now we're subject to a town vote at a town meeting.
And you're eliminating more industrial land.
Yeah.
Right.
As needed, so...
We don't have enough industrial land, right?
No.
Okay. Anybody else that wants to be heard? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bumbara, seconded by Mr. Forget to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing is closed. Would the board like to move forward with a decision tonight?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for case number 2021-12, 286 Webster Street, as presented.
Okay. Let me have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bumbara to approve the special permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass it unanimously. All right, we will draft, get the decision drafted as soon as possible and get it, get it to you as soon as it's available. Okay.
Good luck, and I'm glad to see another pizza place.
You guys thought it was going to be harder than that. What are you doing?
Yeah, look what he did.
You never know what to expect. What are you doing? Come on.
He's got a whole crew here, Lou, he's got the whole crew just in case.
I know, I know, come on, you guys. Hey.
Good night.
We need a reason, so...
Good.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Good night.
Bob, see you, good to see you.
Nice to see you, guys.
All right, starts on a Webster something line, goes, yeah, goes along...
Say, Bob.
25, 38, 40.
Same.
I bought it from a woman, I didn't want to buy it.
You're on the same.
And she wouldn't sell it to me, so I said...
You're on the same?
I gave her a deposit, then she says, "I want to give you back your deposit."
You're done, right?
So it's okay, fine.
We're done tonight.
Yeah, we're done?
Yeah.
Nothing on brown, not brown?
No.
No.
Okay. Well, let's see what, we're gonna, we could...
They're loyalists.
One second. Ken, do you have anything? North Brown?
Uh, I've stuck up the end of the brown, the, our bubbles, because they're done with the shoreline, so, uh, road, see?
The center road.
Yeah. Proceeding with water lines, expected to be combined or go in three weeks.
Oh, sweet.
The whole road all the way across, I did approach them with potential, I said, "If you guys want to figure something and present it to us, if you guys..."
Good night.
You do a hell of a job, I didn't know what you did all this time, you know?
I think, uh, my thought process, you never know with the economy what's going to happen, and it becomes a most eligible, these probably, if something should happen, they have all the...
Correct.
So I said, "Get something else presented, and I'll see what I can find."
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah, but we skipped over June, I think.
Okay, is that the meeting?
Yeah, no, we skipped over.
I think it is.
Can you go back now? On normal lives.
Said, uh, almost past your bedtime?
There's a motion on the floor, so, and it's been seconded, so adjourned.
Okay. See, I told you it wasn't going to be like you said.
You didn't say that.
I just got a vote on, on closing the hearing, on closing the meeting.
Leave this here. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bumbara to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned at 8:38.